Alright, let's get this together. The United States. And to our court of justice. My nation. I think I'm in this one. The right of justice. Reading. Uh. It's two. Well, the Harvard judge. This is. So. Six. And everybody there. And maybe. And so. There's. Leave. So. And fifty. It's helpful. Uh. Just just the term. You see. So, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
What was going on there?
Well, when the US law is set up, we have to more detail on the German. It's not like we're generally sorry to hold. But it's not that simple. We could disable that. We don't charge for it. What's my opinion? Um. There's sixty four German.
Well, that's that's. Well, the senators removed from the calendar. So, for the notes. Have all this information.
Oh, I didn't see that. Thanks. Uh. It's that.
Yeah. I'm sure. Yeah. Well, it's not long and hard on inspiring action.
Um. You're good. Sorry. It's a bit um.
Very nice.
I'm just spending time with you. So.
Don't forget.
I don't know. I have four.
Okay.
I must be. That's the only thing. Obviously.
So, I mean. If I say that. We're like in the future that we're. There are the jerks or the tables. Because. You know, some of these. Yeah. I don't think I have any notes. Otherwise, I would. You know, I'm saying this reason. In some cases, we have. Here. In some cases, we have. But first. And then that. Then start with the term. But maybe. To differentiate. Of the series. For important things. Or how they take. But yeah. I would mind us. We could always say that. Okay, that that'd be it. Um. The only question is about the court. On our response to prior action. Uh. Where it was requested a long year. For an extension for. For that. For. Issue on September twenty five. Off this. So. I remember. Our request for. For court missing progress. Uh. That's. Good. Differentiate. Of. You. Right. So, I guess.
So, what happens to. They want to.
Was that called? Uh. They they wanted to know if they were. Probably without a term. The answer did not. So. Okay. Should I add? The minutes? So, I think. Um. The section. Actually, we had. Another question. For me to come back. The answer's not. Cause. I don't. I don't. I haven't been about the matter. The department. Yeah. We asked your extension. So. I don't. I don't. I haven't been about the matter. Any course. The department. Yeah. Yeah. We. First sentence. Okay, so that's.
I've said.
Okay.
I have.
So, I just. See. Hope they do. The public. Of this work. Is there anything? How do we get to see that?
You can just be. Like. It's. You're glad. Yeah. Hearing these. So, is that better? Can you say my analysis? You're just.
Yeah. So, I. They. Why not? He's in. I'm sure. I'm sure.
Right.
Uh. Uh. Sure. Here. So, uh. Two thirty. I need from an office to ask a question. Or a comment. And Bill. So. Yeah. From the Q R. I'll also check whether there's anybody on Zoom. Certainly. The. No, no, we're standing. You're. Alright, so. Right before. Six. Uh. Three, four, five, six.
I think that's. You didn't. Be like. Yes. Um. How do you have? Um. Do I want to talk to you? You know, we were last year on it. So, a few comments on the same. That's their patients. Um. Which I'm not sure if people spoke to. And he spoke to. After that hearing. And we kind of went through the initial. That you need, which are outlined. You find on the sixteen. And then from there, I think, um. That was. Real content. That's where that. I think I'll do that a few more. I hope that that's important. The other. Yeah. The mind change is that. You can. It was comfortable with it. For. Supervision. The foreign supervision. Yeah. Obviously, we didn't have. Me in September. Without. The. Draft. On it. But. Because of the way. It's. Nothing. So. August. Um. You're going to be. I'm sending. So. It's your second. Of course. It's up to the committee. And it's very. Because just the way. My presentation. Like it's. When you're. I mean. It's funny. I don't know. Or it's. It's really. Absolutely. But yeah. I couldn't. Like. If you're. If you're. Get twenty. That's. Very. Such.
Uh. Yeah, no. I I I read the. Yeah. You know. Charles. I feel like. Very. I believe. But that's. Okay. I read. I read now. So. Great.
And it was prepared to our satisfaction. And um. Just all the comments. And was pretty much decided. Would be honest with me. Again, in the September. And you just. It's. A. Of course. To. You'll have to talk to him. Yeah. To review. I don't know. Revisit. What. You know. Much. I just. Stories. You can. If you come.
As you say. We're. I'm very happy. That it's.
Yes. Yeah. Doors just. And then you can walk us through it. And complete. This.
Well, it's just the ultimate. Job. Yeah.
It's gonna be.
There.
Sorry.
Is that okay?
Yeah. That's. Every step.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So. I guess. We're. For. My action. The first item is. Step. Our. Request. You. By the way. For this. Is there anybody? So. I think. For example. Stretching out. Just the most. Somebody here.
That's what I thought. I'm just looking at. To the end. So like. Here. I'm not. Or my question. My questions. About. So. That's why.
So. You've used. They. I. They're. For. So. Is that. I think. It was. Being. Any questions. About. Yeah. So. Back to. I make sure that.
Okay. So. Cars. It's here. But I don't think. You can. Which are. Also. Yeah. But that was. Such. Questions. So. Did you have any? Uh. Interactions? With the. I will. Then. On. Twenty seven. A street. That they're. Asking. You. If you said them.
Yeah. Yeah. My. Looking back. My notes from the June. Uh. Was. That. The target. Um. Was. Out. And it was. They. Yeah. Uh. Information. So. You can. Correct. To. Have that. But actually. So. I need. To have that. The. Uh. Okay, so. Sound like a beautiful. Tape. On this. Uh. If you tell. Somebody. The. In fact.
Um. Did they? Um. Contact you doors? Asking you? Whether or not. I have my votes. From August. Yeah. Yes. That. From. The. Department. Nation. At some. Twenty seven. Last. Meeting. September. First. And then. Uh. That you said. What happened? The meeting. And we. They always. Were speaking. Now. Interaction. And that's. Where. That's. Take a chair. Yeah. Why? What's your answer? So. That's. Did it talk to you? No. No.
I mean. Uh. The notes. We're talking about a consistent. Not back. Not. Not back and forth. Between you. That's. Now.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Yes. This. This. Okay. So. We get a table. Take off the. Calendar. I would assume. But. Well. Let's. Let's. Let's take. Let's. We both. A bit. Sure. Like.
Right.
Six. Twelve.
I think that's the reason. We didn't have a meeting last week. Right. I'm making motion. To do that. You can. Motion the table. Um. The. Um. Uh. Request for. Me. Well. And. Twenty seven. A street. Across second.
So.
Alright. Um. To the record. The next. Meeting. And it's. No.
So. Okay. I'd like to see. Resolution. Court. And. Appreciation. So. If I. Play. It's. Very. Long. And. So. I guess. Question. Is whether we're. Interested to be. We.
Yeah. To teach. It's. Why? This is a hard. Period. Issue. There's. Living. Times. To. The. Property. And the water. I don't know. Is there. Land. Is there? Is it? Now? That they are. Two issues. Why? Why do you have to? Do this? This is a little skinny piece of land. You're throwing the gas. Or. Or. And the. Approach. Office. And. So. Why? I don't know. Why it's coming to us. It's. It's. Very. Important. That's. The. Five. Or. The. Times. And it has to be. Same way. To. Involve. Agency. It's. On.
We have to be. Have. For. Target. For. To be. With. Operation. And I think. Their expression is. What jurisdiction? That's. Or. Do you have? Just. Perfect. Or. Which.
Yeah. There's. A very. Part. Of. A very. For. The. Lobby. So. There's. A very. Turned. Us in the water. Is that. Our. Tradition. It. It's. It's. Quite. If you. And I'm. Really. Like. The. One. The word. Well, that. That would be the term. Why? Define.
Would. Would. Would it come before us? Sort of. From. The. So. Would we? Jurisdiction? Well. I. I could. Anything. Look. At. It. And.
Yes.
David said. Maybe this needs to be. Benedict. I. I. We. Have. It's. Right here. On. The jurisdiction. Yes.
Right. Now. It's just. Today. We. 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 Have. Four. Have. Thank you. We have a secret. And. I just wanted to. Really. Because. That's. The only thing. For. The.
I'm not. Saying. You. But. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Jurisdiction. Or. Right. And. So. So. I don't. Need. To. Here. The. Jurisdiction. That. We. Next. In. The. Agency. That has. The. One. Jurisdiction. Which. Of course. Now. Yes. That's. We. Definitely. So. So. I. Perhaps. No. Yeah. No. No. Interesting. I. See.
But to the question, comments uh in form of.
Well, I think we should ask. We have to do this. Because it involves. And what do we miss?
It sounds like time for initiation again. From my understanding, so we're going to section in the code. I just want you to. For to be.
I mean, that's actually, and it was referred to there. I don't see what we have these restrictions. That could be basically a complaint or an application. You know, they can refer to any agency that's listed in the statute with us, but we have to. I just think we have to. I don't think you're trying to hack me. Or I think you actually may not. Commenting on application for which we have. I'm sorry, but when you're referring to. Your station for telling us these. I mean, our mission also as well. Groundsake. And that is made recommendations. Our goal is to make recommendations to. On. In the application. Yeah. I'm not sure if this type of. It's that either. If I could be your best. It's a. Well, yeah, I think. It has to be. I'm actually. You know, that's also. I think I need to check. I need to work. This is. This is what I've got. Looking at that section. So it just gives. I mean, for the. So now we see that they take. There's been. Part of the historic presentation. And other things. So I'm talking about. Unless unless the law of the nation that we typically deal with. More for. How people. Or say. And we start coming. Only in three years. That's all.
So it's. Start us with. Uh.
Yeah.
Is that. Sure for his situation or he doesn't.
That's fair.
Yeah, you know, well, even on this, I mean, uh, you know, these. Something that's. Because we may not. I mean, it's. I'm relying on it somewhere. Right now, it's. And I guess. That's now there's. Tremendous. War issues are. Right, so we like. But it's not. It's a. It's. And I'm. Very.
It's. It's. Question. So.
Okay, right. So we have it some. It's.
It's. But the. The. Which says. Yes. When. It's. Like. For. We're not. Here on. What is. The.
Right. I think.
You can.
It's my. I think. I think. Let's.
Well.
Thank you. Sure. Uh. Three three. Uh. That's why I think. I think. One. For all. Uh. The. Being. Collected. It's. And I mean, for both. My needs for one. And what. The. We have two rational trees. And we talk about. These. Threats. And the. Foundation of. Their. Such. That. People. After this. Simply. Including. Or having. That. Having. The. God. It's. I think. A lot. It takes me. There's so much. Playing. The general. And. Right. And. Those. That. Inside itself. About. My. Needs. To. Use. I dare. For sure. Whatever. Uh. Speaking. Has been. Thank. To. Please. That's. Now. It's. Very. Stated. That. Just. I'm. Sure. There's. A. The. The. Actually. About. Two. Months. Of. And. I'm trying to change. The. Kind. Of. The. Part. That. Is. In. Everybody. There. Probably. Wants. To. I asked. A lot. Of. You know. Church. And. So. They would. Think. About. And. So. So. Thank. You. If. The. So. It's. I. Do. Uh. I think. Before. The. So. It's. Long. So. It's. The. It's. I hope. To.
I have two questions. Uh. Certainly. It's. The. Point. That. Is. You know, these. These. That. They're all. Giving. Us. What. Is. Accomplishing. That. For. Brand. And. It. Actually. requires. Part. Of. Certain. Species. So. And. You don't. Have. A. Side. You. See. So. So. We're. Same. Part. This. Sorry. Uh. I think. I. I. It's. For us. But. Because. General. Look. At. Two. Years. Right. It's. Just. They're. There. Uh. There. Is. Some. Methods. That. Really. There. It's. For. Where. That. Right.
Sure. So. Be. Trying. To. Understand. So. Much. General. Or. They. And. Now. They're. They have. So. I can. Autumn. Very. It's. In. Freshwater. In. Species. It's. I'm. Yes. Of. Patients. It has been. A. Long. Time. It's. In. Twenty. Often. When you're. Just. Standing. Very. By. Their. Own. Like. There. Are. Lots. Of. All. The. By. As. Some. Deficits. You. Talk. To. Species. And. Uh. Anyways. Unfortunately. You know. Rise. And. Surprise. And. Real. Much. Harder. Uh. They provide. The. And. Because. There's. Some. Things. That. Uh. They provide. Some. Filters. For. It's. Yeah. It's. Pretty. Good. And. It's. Operating. For. It's. Pretty. Nice. And. Actually. Just. These. Are. About. What. The. You. Something. You can tell. The. Three. Appears. And. So. Why. It's. That's. One. Thing. Very. Facts. That. I'm. Sure. Uh. Yeah. This. One. The. Three. Appears. And. And. I think. The. Struggles. On. Only. Uh. Over. Perhaps. Yeah. So. I was. Here. Sure. That. Ten. Years. Two. Years. In. As. And. So. So. I. So. That's. Just. The. The. You. That. Is.
So. Who is. That.
Yeah. Yeah. Things. That.
Okay.
Yeah. It's. More. That. Number. One. Four. Fifty. Forty. So. The. And. And. The.
So. This. So. Looking. Again. Uh. Very. Scary. This. Did. Follow. So. We have to. Remember. Uh. So. She's. They. Don't. Decide. And. Say. Okay. We're. Here. We're. So. It's. It's. So. You. Need. To. Do. This. Because. I can. Things. They. Change. For.
So. I actually. Come. To. This. And. She agreed. I said, you know, that. What I was saying was that we need permission. As. Harvard. And. Her. And. Then. Issue. We are. Looking. At. Permission. All. Very. Fast. So. We should. So. We should. Know. There. As. You know. And. The. Was. A. Plan. We. Had. It. So. It should. Turn. This. Should. Be. Right. Now. This. Maybe. Some. Should. Be. Going. Check. And. That. Was. Your. Life. So. That. Is. Now. It's. That's. She. Which was like. Up. Into. Any. Point. I. That's. The. Time. To. Develop. Especially. The. C. Decision. Part. Part. Of. This. If. It's. By. The. Department. Of. The.
That's. Really. Interesting. Because. It's. Such. The. Such. The. This. What. We. Have. It's. The. We. We don't. Have. The. Question.
It's. What. I have. This. I. See. After. The.
So. That's. Pretty. It's. It's. We. Come. At. And. So. About. The. That's. Check. If. You. Do. It. About. That. It's. It's. For. Me. If. There. Uh. And. And. Things. To. Be. Part. Of. The. Project. That's. It's. 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 I mean. It's. That. See. It's. All. The. That. Republic. Is.
That was. Something. About. Oh. Yeah. She. She was. Like. Question. I said. Before. For. Starting. To. Actually. Tell.
How can you perform. To. You. Really. You. Know. Have. You seen. Something. You. You. The. Well. Unfortunately. I'm. Sorry. To. You. You know. You don't. Get. See. That's. Certainly.
I think. It's. How. It's. More. Is. Um. It's. Three. Years. That. So. It's. Important. To. Make. Sure. That. Not. You. Just. Such. A. Question.
And. So. So. The. Final. Decision. With. The. Conditions. Correct.
Yeah. What. Is. Right. Yeah. What.
So. I'm. Having. A. Thought. About. It. You know.
Two year period of suffering. Uh, what happened to him? You know, we found that I had a life sentence for her experience as well. We found the two years is sufficient uh to establish a healthy blood needs. And luckily, well, you know, like it's it's frustrating, which reasonable. We put a terrible discussion to do. That's why I think I've come three years ago, but they did.
Yeah, just man, that you don't basically the the mechanism of how they're like controlling factories. It's like honey, you know, three times a year and and planning the vegetation. And then like after a few years, you know, a few cuttings that, you know, the rise will start to die. And then the fight rises is replaced by the vegetation that we're implementing at that time. So it's very exciting to see my enthusiasm and the same. Immediately invited the two hundred years of people that do have successful uh one thing, one thing, you know. Um, you think if like the energy is easy and records, you feel like it needs, you know, a little more, a little bit more, a year later, it's up the journey that we wanted to to be, you know, be five, two hundred percent, you know, survival rate there, so. That's that's what we can see, you know, we can try and raise raising their goals and it's essentially to, you know, protect the identity project, which, you know, we can't seriously, we need and and what like happens.
It's important by English, that's very important. So also looking at the bridge, I want to begin with areas. We have more pictures, you know, during that time. It's involved film, they mean um structures, you know, any of the things that are listed, I mean, like you have to. So finding the native species should be as a continuum, you know, into two levels, a good restoration. I was gonna ask, what what does the D B C require as part of this?
So it's it's almost similar, we're in key, I mean, not so much for the acting. Actually, maybe, but for the removal of second, some of the agents who believe in T D D.
Do they have the points?
Um, so various ones, while we're using a similar condition, where you have for many years of monitoring orders and touring. I just, you know, like, I mean, this is successful as a, you know, like various, but, um, you know, always need that. Once upon a time, I did it as well. It's the main other reason, um, we're going in the nature, right?
So, you know, one of the things that we do, like, you know, there's a lot of times that goes on to the property, how you want to keep.
Time to change the history of our towers, you know.
But it's so, it's very exclusive, having that. For our bodies are not just something that ever.
It's really just the intro of the culture, if you're telling me that, because we're going to want.
Well, we don't hear anything like that in terms of stipulating, um, for everybody to regroup, regroup or take.
We have done that actually, I mean, covers and it's three, two year period, reports. And the second, you tend to, uh, I think you come to six, seven, eight years.
So I have a question, and I thought so much, I sort of go through you, um, and you've got your patients. But I can see that, um, and I can remember this, um, because I got caught because I remember I got a master. Uh, wood, trees and brush and stuff, somehow sort of similar. And that was March nine, twenty twenty. How long do people have to come back with a restoration plan? I mean, that's been two and a half years. Is there any kind of stipulation, like, can people do this money? Um, do they agree just, you know, violation of guidelines, um, guidelines or rules or laws or whatever? Is normally they would have two years, two and a half years to come back with restoration. But I'm not looking at you specifically, because I knew this was not only.
I think I'm just in specific, this project, so this is the second life, the work that we did for. Um, and how you're successful, the first one, at least a little bit of time on our part, and also the difficulty.
Um, okay. Very, very complicated, probably. Oh, sorry, I know that it's like twenty twenty, you know, and then we had, um, um, I remember standing right now, there's another one where there was a matter of, you know, and. Well, actually, you know, it is, it's like twenty sixty seven, or whatever.
No, no, no.
Yeah, where they could just mess it, clear the lot, mess with the trees, throw it through the deck. And then brush it again, and say, okay, hold on, get it, blah, blah, blah. And then they come back with a happy level, actually, for sale, so. Whatever.
Fortunately, okay, it's like, we really, totally, I always have some discretion and support. If I actually have some discretion, also, I still, which I can be a gentleman. Like, really, probably, unfortunately, unfortunately, because that would be kind of. I mean, this, this is supply, this is right, this is the new, only five, ten, ten. But there's this, this depending, uh, this depending on nations and and.
Uh, has been mostly, you know, the side of each end, you know. I'm just wondering, if first people, it's kind of, you know, let's see, sure, what's your, if there's a couple of countries that you're, is that you actually look just to.
I have some good question, uh, I, 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 I see it, the similar, similar issue, the question I look. Um, and also we've discussed that. And the best of the surplus is to have that, basically, have that, this, and that's, uh, that's it. I don't, you know, have it. Russian, actually, thirty years ago, when it was right, 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 and I, um, I, I think, yeah. People, there's something, if we're growing in a harsh environment, out by the water, out by the beach, and it's a thing over. Um, everyone, I bet you want, basically, uh, best I think, it's like something, it's a better place. Um, but it's depends on the, 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 controlling, uh, what's big, you know, that's the most. Many, many, really, perhaps, the tax. Just got more class, you know, out, you know, out, you know, out. It might be that's your house, you know, that's your, yeah, yeah, it's like, uh. A lot of people.
Congress, you're being, it's like, it's like everything, it's like, yeah, the rest of the country is that house and job. Right, yeah, that's the work that's, again, I should, I know, it's, it's to be safe, to be safe, the house, for that, that, and we crazy, that, 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 with. And, yeah, that's the problem, that's the problem, that's true. So just my chance to change that, please, um, if I pass the, this, right, this, you know.
It's that. The house is. I should. This quarter, you you're only thirty. But you change some. Only thirty. That's it. So we have this. Right side. With that. That's. It's not about that. What is that? You want to go back? Working on that stuff. The debt. On the page just. I would like that. The page. Because. The.
The first, the greatest. There's that. Green things going here between this. Quarter down.
Now, it's a it's a it's a. It's a. That makes me. Because the house would not be the. Fine, so. The. Ground water areas. They can be required. The device is high. So we. It's. Sort of. High areas to bring. Great. It's like. No way. They say yes. It's like. It's. So it's it's a it's a. What is that? All I did is bring up. Cross. That the first. That is my. I got the brain, so. So between the. We think this, you know, by. Lower stuff. It was time. That. That from. So. First. Your. The. Without. For.
How is that? Is that a hard structure? It's like you guys. Structure will be. First. Every site.
There's. This. Section through. It's a. You know. Retainer. That makes me. That.
And.
That. The. There's. The pink is the pink. And. There's. The. Things. Part. Just. The. We have to. Obviously. Want to. Have. That's. Things. Is. So. It's. That's. As well. It's just. Uh. That's. Pretty. Just like. Four foot path. If you. Um. To. To. Have to.
The. Screen area is that. Part. Corner.
On the outside. Where. Well, the idea was. The. Let's. On the edge. That has that. The. Uh. Higher. So. Is. And then. Some. Then it's. Which. Which. The. First.
What'd you say?
While. That was part of. One of these. Is like. The highest. When you come down. This. Part. Is. That. So. I'm. Like. Is it? Of course. Down. It's. It's. Same. It's. It's. Pretty. But. Down. It's. The. Because. Perhaps. We have to. Know. About. So. We. Now. So. For. Open. It's. Challenge. Challenge. Of us. That. It's. Water. The. So. The. Part. Screen. Two. That's. Yeah. See. I. Like. This. Yes. Honestly. Uh. It's. After. You're. Uh. You're. You're. Fortunately. Right. That's. He. Actually. First. So. I. I think. I just. Make. Same. Now. I. I expect. I would. That. For. That. I.
Can I? Already? So. So. I don't know. It's. Also. Initial test. School setting. Was it secondary?
What do you? Say? Or. What's? More?
Hi. Here.
So. For. Pretty.
And how many? She? For. This? Two feet?
The engineer at least. Point. I mean. I think. That was. See. Test. Once. The. Engineer. Used the. One. That was. That was actually. My. Water. At the height. Of. So. That. Was. On. We. We. Tell. The. Yes. So. We. We're. Keep. Going. We're. Keep. Going. We're. We're. Two. Here. Uh. Yeah. The. The. Yeah. It's. Yeah. I see. Whatever. Yeah. What?
It's. There's. There's no. Table. This.
It's. Pressure. I. Have. To.
Which you. If you. Have.
Ten. All. Yeah.
I'm. Sure. Yeah. You wouldn't mind. Because. You. Come. So. That's. Very. Yeah. Right.
Well. Like. This. That. If they are. It's a shadow. We don't need retain. Well. It doesn't. Block. The. Part.
So. The. Pressure. I. Switch. You. Is. How? How is that? If you stack it up. Like. Yeah. I was. During. First. Ground. Water. Is that on this? Right?
Yeah. It's. Section. Chills. And. Ground. Water. Is. You. On. Of. Which.
Okay. So. You. That. You.
The. I. It's. Actually. The. It's. On. The. And. More. You. Say. Right. Now. The. Uh.
So. This is really like a minor point. If you. Have. You. Made such effort. To. Get. How. And then. Everybody. Set. A. Hard. Wall. These. Planting. Areas. Which. Can you sort of dissolve? Sort of. That. Those. Structures. Right? Is there some way? We. Provide those? Who have? Been. Bad. By. Structures?
If. What? Do.
What?
Uh. So.
Well. Is. Yeah. Now.
Well. You. Make. A. Shadow. And. Have. Distance. Areas. That. We. Are. Making. Shadow. For. Having. More. Brain. To. Less. This. Is. So. If. Pass. Through. Books. Red. Edge. Was beneficial. Have these small areas that. That. We. Get. Back.
And. What is? The. Works. That. Will. Be. Where. You. Go. Just. Like. So. We. Feel. Sometimes. So. Work. Because. There'd be times when people. Put in. You want. Put in. Like. The. Stair. And then. They actually. Put. Like. Show. Into. Like. The. The. Mansion. We. Heard. That. We. And. That was. A. Very. Curious. That. One. What. That. For. Is. The. You. Know. The. Circle. Because. That's like. Putting. The. House.
Well.
It's. A. Structure.
Well. The. I. Think. It's. A. And. Do. What? The. Watch. Right. Right. So. The. Press. It. From. That. As. Always. Has. And. And. So. We. This. Kind. We. Kind. Of. This. Lots. Of. People. That. Would. Yeah. What's. Your. Next. Is. The. One. Of. Trouble. Decided. To. Basically. Over. The. Now. Now. The. Interesting. Thing. That. Is. When. It. Is. It. Is. The. Men. If. The. Boys. You. Could. True. Because. You. Have. A. Little. More. Of. The. And. Type. This. Next. Now. The. Comments. That. You. Have. What. You. If. Are. You. To. Look. At. The. Front. Is. My. So. What. You. See. But. Essentially. Is. You. Want. Last. You. Like. Which. You. Fifty. Five. To. Increase. That. Is. Three. Hundred. So. If. You. Have. Sent. That. Decision. Had. To. More. Of. And. To. Know. That. That. Is. That. Or. If. It's. The. House.
You know. I just. It's. So. Hard. To. Do. I don't know. The. Light. Stand. Here. It. Is. My. Eyes. But.
You're. So. Mine. Is.
Of. Course. Yeah. Just. Okay. Probably. Yes. Right? Is. It. A. One?
That's. My. So. Really. You. See. That. I. See. That. You. So. What. I. So. I. Don't. Just. Go. Fast. I. Just. Do. That. I. Just. Say. You. Know. This. Is. The. Time. To. Do. So. That's. How. It's. Not. The. Way.
It's. All. The.
I. I. It's. Really. It's. That's. So. Step. Down. It's. Not. Our. Your. Years. It's. It's. You. Just. That. You. Is. Wrong. I. Don't. Know. I. I. Protection. To. The. Planet. Is. You. Are. What? Is. Your. Uh. Just. For. The. What? Is. The. Path? And.
So. That's the presentation, that's the presentation.
Can you describe what's going on um between the uh the block line and the pool? Is that green area there or is that another green bit?
So if you think earlier on the first side, it's.
Yeah.
I think the. It's maybe. So it's maybe four years, so it's that maybe it's that. So I want to see this. So nothing wants to from what exactly? We have a bit of that, that we're not gonna have that reason. So you want to just try to protect the space that's next to the pool. Because the water is gonna be a lot more than I would see. The big chicks are pretty.
So support on the ground.
The pool was gonna be up like that, I think. And so I just don't know, I think we all get it, it's pretty much a free. Um. It's not a lot, so really, it's not gonna be. There's gonna be space under there. That's the green, so. But the pool has had, it's gonna be watched, but it's. To the pool area. That why we can't see in detail that. That it. It must be built to have some space. So all those things back. Right. And we can't push the whole, but it's. Uh, so it increases the effect. And that. That that is, that that's. That we're asking, it's not even one thing. Uh, before we got this now. Which is the closest. And and part of the evidence, when you look at the original. Like, the original place, the original passage, which is. It's the walk, it's long from here to there. The whole thing will start here, that's. This is actually, it's the. It's the. It's the. The specific circuit. This one. That's still the. The. So this is just beside. So the hall is, this is headed straight from here down the way. The whole way. So this part of the application. You know, just comparing to. Where this, he said, like, where this. Yeah. Back to the. But he didn't realize that. That the. No, we have a couple of dogs, they have to do anything to get around, so we just, we just. We have some states such as. And somehow to say. But in that. Yeah. So. That whole area is.
Do you have that um calculation here, like the width of the lot, uh, fifty feet? Versus what that refers versus what your square footage of that is?
Yes, you have a question.
Is that, can you give someone a.
Well, I can tell you how big it is, it's six thousand. It's gonna be.
Six thousand?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I don't know. And how wide is the lot, what does that number mean?
We have a lot of. We have lots of. I think.
No, it's the width of the, of the, of the width of the lot.
So it's.
None on the diagonal, it's just a bridge across. Eighty two? Eighty two thousand fifty zero zero? Right, I have, actually, yes, we're footage. If you were to check my lawn.
Yeah, that's actually right, next to one of my questions. Everything. Okay, we read it, it's like students. What would it be if it was fifty foot? Okay, so. So the areas increased.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Okay, it's a barrier. And then you can see what we have here. We don't well. What?
Right, that's, that's all I'm asking for, so it's eighty two C Y, I'm fifty feet, it's forty one hundred. And you have almost sixty one, is that correct?
That's correct. So the other idea on this one, because you could. We use that. It's important for me to relax and stuff. You're seeing that. You're seeing that, that's, that's. So. And I, I think this is. You're wondering, if I put the house. That, 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 that. Like. But our. And. It's everybody's city because. The challenge in one. Challenge in one, that comes. It's. Files between acres, not actually. Transit portion for us. So we. See, we would. The. It's a basketball that been. Last year. Charge. That'll be the great. Dimensional vision on the east side. What we have. The management. What is. Fifty percent. Yeah, it's. I couldn't. First thing. Why did I? I wanted to. I just. I do all. After the month. Um. The. The. Uh, that's why I hope the. That it's a good. On a. Over. So I think that's. It's. Uh, except very small, we have to generate. Again, with these. It's. Or it's gonna be. And it's forty five hundred feet. Uh, that's what I'm. It goes to. The. Was a step. Direction as far as like. And so that's what it just means. The. Uh, how much. I need. I mean, yeah. Like, let's get. So. I think there was. It's the difference between the. It's trying to. Still. To be that. And. And I think. We have to test one. It's, it's the question. I want to do a. First thing is. It's like. Um. Okay, I'm. Second. Um. Sorry, I could more. Just making a question, so if you take this. You can. To. More. Something. I. You're. You could. It's very. Now, so. That's the. You've never come. Have you? Best. We know. Everybody's becoming a situation. It wants to demonstrate. So. So. It's. It's. And we from testing. Uh, it really comes down to. The. Try to. If. On the. On the. It must be. Information. To have the accomplished. Better. It's like. It's. In. Situation. It's. It's. That's the. To apply the. Term. Like this. Which I think is. Having something. And. The. To. If it's.
Do you have the square footage of the house that exists now? Four by four? If I assume that the. Simple structure is there so long ago, so many houses. It's a two story house. Two thousand ten? That's the square. And it's. Your story and the two stories. So two stories, the two thousand and V has the first floor and the second floor. Just a quick. So. And. What would say, since then, is. And what is with the death?
That, you're just in that?
Well, this is.
You asked. What's, what exists out of street? You asked. I thought you asked. What is. What is the existing footage? What is the. That's. I have a couple of these numbers. I'm just gonna go to the numbers. Existing building coverage is two thousand thirty six square feet. The proposed building coverage is two thousand five hundred thirty five square feet. Existing lawn coverage is two thousand nine hundred twelve square feet. The proposed lawn coverage is two thousand nine hundred nineteen square feet. So the. Lawn coverage. The lawn coverage. I mean, the five. I think. So it's. It's. We're. Building coverage. Of the lawn coverage. Building coverage is going, is coming up. That is two thousand thirty six square feet. The proposed building coverage is. At the same. Coverage. It's. Three thousand five hundred ninety three square feet. Of. The. We have the. The D C. Coverage. Actually, two thousand square feet. To. Well, you. All of this. It's also. Whether they are minor issues. It's. Sure. So.
Do, do you have any um? Concerns that that green area has got a hard order in that?
I. One of your questions, just to. I need to. Let's jump. I guess you. I'm. Cross section. Something that might. To. Cross section. Exactly. Yeah. This. Cross section. Same. Some of the sections. I mean, it goes there. So. For. Also. Heard your explanation, but it's not really coming through on planes. It's the. How do they. Most. That in terms of. We weren't anticipating any, any of that stuff. To count the. Bring it. So. It's. So that's. The. Shallow. On the. Website. Exactly. In terms of what is. Happens on the outside. Versus this. Lens. More lens. Planets. So we're. We're. Next. Later. Of the. Of the. To. Agree. We, we, we like that. It's important enough that we can bring. The. House. Back. To. Great. So every. Every week is on iteration. It's not just trying to. On the line. Yes. When. Much. The. Space. Really. Then I find the. It's. It's. Does. That way. That's. You have. So. We. We. Hope everything better to. A lot of. So. We have a mobile. To. Water. And. To. To. Surface. Water. To. Like. That. And to. This. This. Everything. But we did. Have. That's. The. Here. With. But. That's. What. Could. Have. That. That was. I. I. Perhaps. That's. Next. Before we start. What is. In. The. It's. You. But we have. Of course. That you. Of course. Yeah. I think. I. Just. You have. You have. The. This. This. Which. The. It's. 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 Up here. It's a shame. It is a. Any more session. Where. Where the. So. The. The. When you look at the. Start. Off the. By. That was the. We want you to use on the. Before it says. That's. We take. And. It's. That. It's. Free. Yeah. Free. You know. Most. Okay. And with the. The. Corner. My. I also. Of course. We. It's. Right. Something. More. Lens. Feature. That. We take. What. By. But this. I'm. Quite. I'm. Not. Not. You. Got. Except. So. It's. We're. Too. On. Yes, that's.
Which we came along with. Copy.
This. Seven.
Right.
Because. When. We. We. Change. You know, it's. So we don't have. It's. That. We. So. We. First. We want to. It's. From. This. That's. It's. Basically. We. Crazy. That's. It's. Always. That. And. So that's what. That.
So. Do you see brown well here, Jen? I'm looking.
Are you? You. Test.
Well. We're falling off from this. Big. Man. Drive. Donald. Stash.
The drive was starting off. The. Three. We started. Of the. For. Their. Team.
Oh, here's one. There's one. There.
We. That's. Sorry.
Here.
We actually. So. Drive. Was. The. That's. It's. It's. That. Those. Drive. It's. It's. Maybe. So that. More. To. It's. To. Six. You know. The. Text. Right. There. There. I'm. Sure. You. You. Some. Or. Just. That's it. Because. Then. You. The. So. Twenty four. Two thousand twenty one. So. It's. Good. Program. About there now. For everything. That. Step. That. Or. We went up. The difference. Is. And. It's. So. You. All the changes that. You know, that is that the one of the changes was managed. They were. So. So. Express. What the. Like. And. Like. Look. It's. Like. So. It's. So. So. It's. The. The. From. If. And. It's. To. Have. Quest. You. It's. It's. On this. I think. That's. We. It's. We didn't. Need. Similar. Yes. For. The. Shining. Oh, this thing. I think. Just. We just. I don't. So. We. We. This kind of. That's. I. It's just. Everything. I want to feature. Um. You know. Put yourself. As. The. The. Again. To. To. Just. My. Questions. I think. I'm. Sitting. Down. Here. I get. Great. So. I think. This. Um. There. These. Specific. Breakdowns. I've got. Pretty. Of course. You have. The. I've been. Hit. That. More. To. Have. The. Second. That's. Do we? Do we have any comments from the, the audience? Whether. Here. Or. Um. Some. World. Who have comments on this. This is. Over here. Any hands up on Zoom?
Yeah. I can't.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Um, so. Do we have anybody on on Zoom that wanted to talk about the sound protection?
I don't think so.
We'll talk in the chat and ask them.
There's like three people on there and I think they're here for one or two.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. That if anybody who wanted to comment or ask a question who couldn't because. The tech folks were having a nice one, I'm sure. Oh, I will on record that they voice somebody and that they're here for it. Do you have a third one? Tech folks, there isn't one of them. We just gave sound protection.
There's a sound problem.
So they're out of their own. Were you sure once?
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, so uh. If anybody wants to uh.
Yeah, so well, I just was going on my mind is I see an house that's. For a print that's twenty five hundred and ten there, first from two thousand to twenty five hundred. We asked you lock off again, but it's still considerably bigger. Um, and. Uh, on the plus side, which carries a lot of sway for me, is you have like fifty percent. Um, more offer than the law requires. So those are two sort of tiny kind of um. Issues in my head. It's kind of simplistic, the best kind of the greatest. Um.
Okay.
And now. If you all agree on that. Good job, Justin. I guess. I think there's a question how to interact with practical. Well, that's not totally true. I mean, the house could be smaller to me in the second story. Everybody's obviously saying it's not like a practical alternative, but maybe one to do on itself. I don't know. The first time it comes.
Robert. I've never asked it. I just way I look at it is is that, you know, they they live in your house and you have a. Um. You have a nice uh. Which is you never get to. What group like that also. Just this story now, so so I see the world as this past.
Well, there you go. Well, I I just need to make sure this this is the only other point of interest. Between the campaign and the office and. I. I. Very great uh. Super marshals and small house. I think scale is probably is. And. We want to see the things. It rounds anymore. Yeah. And I really appreciate the exercise giving us more. That doesn't mean. They are very uh appreciative. I would know. At last time, separately, it's my father and my actions that we are not responsible for. And we give a lot of care, workers on the table and there that are very difficult. Because there should be, I think, because. Sure. Every profession of. It was always here. I didn't just want to ask you quick questions. At this point, based on your comments, I think it's pretty mindless, really just direct to the client's opinion. The type of details you have these advanced around the activity. And it looks like there's much as four feet wide, you know, when you look at the. Four foot five fat. And I don't think that's really what you're trying to. I think you're trying to tell yourself, right?
Yeah.
And then you cannot get the same ones that I looked at, like felt, but. So I agree with what I heard last. You're worried if I. Project, which is making this. So thanks for talking to me. I just want to talk to you before we start explaining the top part. Please let me share the conversation again. Again, I don't know what is important. But the point being, it's not the experience. Um, it gives us a bit of a search. I don't know. I don't find it much if I can just say. You know, people who's out there, it's what they don't really have. So it's.
I know it's tougher.
Yeah, no, it's also very hard on the body. It's hard to help it. I think it's a. Not get done for states. We have a part to take. Yeah. Or that's the point that is the. It's not there. Um, I guess we should close.
Make motion close. One second.
I think more. Yeah, I think it's. I do have a presentation on what's. Um, twenty two something. That's what we're doing.
It's huge.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you know, it's two point five fifty is not a. It's a line. So I just want to make sure that. It has to be useful to try to step by to describe the surface of the next one. Which are pretty small. It's all it's all. It's pretty small. So again, thirty five dollars is better. Which means we're here.
Okay, since.
Okay, thank you.
It's pretty small, I understand. So you're looking through this grassy side, because that's education. We don't have.
Absolutely. It's we have to elevate a lot of people. And we're proud of it. They're flattering it a lot.
That's the news.
How. With the nature beyond the fact that we're not going to create a force. It's the best waters. Better be a flat air and then a. A sort of shameful on the ground. Destroyed. So I would like to pass on the. So you have a sense of seeing three or three by it, so they. And so she's actually a very positive area right here, so this has a place for it like I have right here.
It's my. Well, it has to be like. The.
You're right, this this is. You said. The next thing I can be necessary right here. What I have to say is that. Don't you. So basically, this is what we be saying is the rain.
Like.
See, I'm sorry. If you're interested, we'd be to raise your. Down there. To help sign out the song that walked right there to to. The light, the light is great. So that's. But one point. It's it's actually not too deep. Yeah, it's. But there's. It's not too deep and you know, the acting is not here. And the the very. Those probably.
Is there any way that I don't there's not any drywall over there?
Uh, it's well, there's no drywall over there, so they.
Okay.
It's not only all of them, but you certainly I can leave a lot of them. But this is, you know, this is super sound. There's no, there's no taking that stuff. So this is. So. You know, that's pretty fine. This is.
And what's the landscape behind the truck? Normally.
Yeah, it was good. Space. We we we. We have to be careful. Not just for so. I think small way to do that, put ice back. And I have a guy on the front. So we could. Yeah, there's some. There's a bunch of trees, makes this the edge along the property on the street. And this is. Trees, that's it. Also, I can. Would you ask me a question about what the. Did what. Uh, I should.
I could go.
All I want to do is to. Not my generation. Relaxing. He's like. It's like he's supposed to. Well, this. So.
Well.
Yes.
Yes, we have motion already on the table. Maybe I have a second. So I'm just waiting.
Is that close?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of it. Uh.
This is. If we have. I can watch. I'll follow the. Would you be too. You're prepared? Yes. Okay, very far before.
Awesome.
Okay. So.
I think that's.
Can you see how you. I feel very. Twenty five. There you have.
Um, I'd go yes, but in line of ignorance of this committee, it's the hardest to. Uh, to. And it's only because of that longer. It's fifty percent bigger than is your margin. And I think that was really small, our team, but they just said that. Keeping that in trees. Now they make that smaller. So I think. Um. And I'm just worried about what this is going to be such. But there's probably not a lot of apple things that are going to be going out to. Have fifty percent bigger, harder than.
That's a serious question.
Wait, and.
Sorry, I don't know. And just. Well, just to. Because that's. And this is.
John, you've had that rationale before, and I just don't know. Because you have to be like, huh, what if the sentiment is that we have before, so. Well, I think we have certain long ones that I think we have to sort of. And I think that the people are. They understand that this meeting is such a. Then at home. And then my staff is in the pictures, which are probably they don't. They're far at home. And I think that's the message that we need to. And. And.
Because I support that Chris would agree on that. By. And that's what I'm asking. Not a question. So there. You know, with the virtual services to optimize. It is a tremendous. And I'm trying to outweighs anything else we discussed here, so. Okay, that's it. Actually, can you hear it?
I can't. I can clear the question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yes. Let's get your. I guess.
Okay, the next. I shall be in the next. Well, this is. Two two long. I don't know for each time. So if you. You have to. Function. Back. Burning. Right. It's. That's like.
You're.
I'm like.
Yeah. You're right. Well.
That is.
Well, I. I just like. He's not. He's like. Yeah, he actually got to see. To. You know, all this.
Yeah. I. It's a four two three three nine. But.
It's like. It's like.
It's. Does that.
Have a. Excellent. Yeah. It's such a. Your. Such a. So. It's.
This this part.
Yeah. Yeah. This is. It's. Yes. So here is. Is there a reason why you're on the screen for that? Yeah, because I have to say that. That's.
And we have. Yeah, well, I'll be here.
Yes, guys.
So, uh, we last met this. June second. I'm in the group uh, text to us with uh. That's like three. The first ones that being. There was uh, an elevated porch. Um. There's now there were lots of water. Um, that uh, because we were not closing a dock. As far as that case progress. Um, there was a uh, test, but then once three bunker. Um, that we had to read because it's. All of it. Uh, that land's also that. The board is okay, but that's how you do. What that was. Uh, it it has where they go to the water. So. Water. On the. On this. Three bunker. Uh, the. Carry down to the wetness. And then the last thing was from. It's from. But the. Now that. For example, parties which have been with the bar. And it will produce the um. How the order of the house. To produce it to the minimum under. So.
So is there ethical barriers or is it sort of straight?
I am to all.
How we want.
Yeah. Um, so first we did. We we recorded five fifty three sprint foot. Uh, the. Uh, four block. Uh, I mean, that's just a break is back to the water. It from the. It's like the joy sprint foot. Uh, actually. Uh, that went through the uh, bunker. There was still a. Here. That provides people to. We can find the steps. Because we need to predict the covers. Uh, the. That's outside of bunker. Very careful. Uh, that's what is outside of bunker. Uh, and then there was a. Pressure. In the other area outside of bunker. It's just. So in. This day, a. Only these are these. But that's.
Thank you, John.
I am, yes. Uh, a. Uh, yeah.
Pretty good. Shorts. You think. Well, I think this is key question here.
Yes, I I can. So just. I like.
Well, I'm not sure what. Protect what's safe.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so I I've read what I've seen. Okay, and there's a lot of information about the minimal. Capital area, how to be. You know. So. Um, it's a basic question. I'm surprised to build at all. Um, if I were buying that property today. Knowing that it has to be, you know, any of the. Be a requirement. I would be happy with that. Um, and what I'm asking is what gives your uh, client the right that I would have?
Um, I think that would be have a decent. Capital property that is. For that. Under something that you have the right to build. The minimal price of the. Which is. Eight hundred square feet on the first floor of. Capital skills.
I'm not sure that's sure. I think it's based on when you uh, purchased the property. Uh, that's what I'm saying is I purchased the property. But. If you're applying right now. Knowing that I couldn't build a house with me. On. I wouldn't. It's a bit. And I'm asking it's how your time and situation is.
Uh. I guess there's. There there's there's. About that letter not. That there is a right to build on residential property. If if the board is saying that. My client is not going to make it though. Then there is. Uh, there may be other. S- certain tests there. In which point that um, even to. Is written on. Um, and I believe. And then we're going to deal that first. And then it goes to the point of essentially. sensitivity of those three. And you know, by. As if I'm an attorney, I mean, whatever. Um, if if no. This is three. And we're in a situation that in debate or in the. Would have to compensate by five or that way. Um, in that way.
I I think what John is saying to it is kind of a factual question, right? And you know. It is a fact. We have to ask it. Will be a fact. We consider. When you. Are you. Bring those to attention. And anyways, this one is almost in. Twenty fifteen. I was. Very very modern. Now, the question is simple answer question. If the. Corner of the property, the buyer's property before or after. I'm sure. Super. And it's. The other side. Okay, okay. And I have to be more aware of the underneath that situation. Of course. Um, and that's what I was. That's what you're trying to. It's. At this point, that that was trying to. If you just can't go around the village and, you know, and buy property. You know, knowing that you could build a house with these requirements. Right. And then telling you that there's so many taking. But you shouldn't know that. Are you. Are you saying there's a lot of things? That you're trying to say. It's. Are you saying you have. And you have. Right.
Um. Yeah. I mean, essentially, you understand that that's what you're trying. And and like, you refer exactly what the. How to say, but this this the. That's what you say. That we are required to have that minimum setback. Or that it's correctly setback and that. If we can't, then we have to provide decision. Um, practical, we have shown there are no other practical strategies for proposing. And then there's no other. Any strategies that we can provide that could show that we're offsetting that. That we're.
Is that.
Well. Yes, you can describe your work. Um, I would say that there are. There are two points where a property is so constrained. Change conditions, plan to change all that where. It would. Or be justified. In denying. First of this year, I is to find out. Whether we guys the situation here or whether there is uh, a. Alternative. That, you know, and you and you. Like you say, it's really. Those setbacks are not what you call traditional somebody setbacks. You know, you know, some areas on the score has the. They're away then if there's no. Alternative, which is something we talked about a lot. And if there is, then then all those other factors come coming. You know, that. All of the cases that are future. So. But, you know, you know, they're 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 definitely to be avoiding. Certainly. Right, that's part of properties that may be saved. With their limitations. Um, these happen to be. But they're. A property so constrained that. It really should. And what are those facts of procedure or whether there is an alternative? Absolutely.
Um, so I think this is the situations here. That I. Been a part of the. Top south end and that east end where. A property is. Um, even more restrained. Even with um, ads. Um, the 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 code. In the town side. Which is. Which uh, is very is very similar to this one. It's two point of. That's why you're. Why that is. With because of actually. Went to the crisis. For any one to make sure that it was. That's all. And since the. That's why it is that way. Um, but. Um. We perhaps should. Even. Part. That that that. We're part of it. That the. I'm just. I guess that if 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 this basis. Uh, the town of Dallas. Our structure. Longer. Uh, uh, experience where people. Um, may have been tired. And then. People into the crisis. Uh, uh, appears to have a decision. And if one of them is. That you did. Said, I guess, more. To listen to us unless you were. Unless. So. I'm. I was. For me, that are not. My.
Yeah, I think. So. It's a question, I mean, if you're. If you're on the ground for twenty years or like or ten years. Eight years. Yes. Then then he owned it before the code went into effect. So protecting a property which was a builtable. Lot. In some way, maybe getting a builtable lot. Then. They have their. If we want. Two years ago. You know, knowing that the. That's. Our situation.
So I guess.
So we just wait until we find that. My property was. Well. Basically, like, let's try to see. But it's. You know, right, that is something. Right. I could. Which is. I think that's. All this. Yeah, before they. You know, it's like. The act of the city. Or by. It is. There's a court decision. And my first step is to dismiss a court decision. And it's. Pretty much several. On the. You know, the court says is that. That is an important factor. For you to separate products. Something. Did the. Party of the. All group. Was all part of the. Anybody who's. The public. On the home, the public. It's. The question about. They were not. It's not. It's not. Uh, inside or. So there is certainly. I'm basically. The discussion. The other. Is. For. Most of the. Because ultimately. We're going to have to consider. The entire. Actually. For anybody to.
So, um, it appears that. When that's. We started out. Uh, June ninth, twenty thirteen. Uh, my client purchased the property. Uh, in twenty seventeen. So it is. And I. I'll also. I copy the. Do you just.
You're like. She's. Very. I have. Very nice. You.
Sure. I'm. Very surprised. I, I'm. I'm actually. I was. Because actually. You were. Turned out. It's. My. Yeah. Um, but yes. Um, so. With that. Say. A house is. Uh, I'll just go through what, what, what we have. That house. Um, as per design. Is as eight hundred square feet on the first floor of. Capital sort of. Um. What, what do you. Said. Probably previously was the first square foot. Which is to the external. But. We have now. It's on. Especially with your house. That to the interior wall. Is eight hundred. Um, because it is. So. We. Also, you have. Here in twenty five square feet. Which. I have to look at. Their time. Sit in there. First time I looked at that. But. They'll believe they can take all of the things that they're trying to do there. Um, for them. Those things. Um. A lot of water here. Uh, they're. First of all, it's. Uh, I guess there's two of those things. Um, and then. We find a. Perplexity. In each of these.
Is that. Cause you can't.
We can't put in. Basically, there is no. Because. We can't. Because of so many. Sacrifices. So. And. But.
What's. That.
Uh, it's. So.
Story.
It's two story. That's. We have. We have. Right. It's. Twenty eighteen. For a. House. And. Put. Uh. Um. The. This. On. Four. It's. On time. It's.
If you make a full seven floor.
No, it's not. Seven. It's a. It's a. It's a.
I know that. What's your ability to not have. Full seven floors. That is actually a terrible. Uh, apartment. Well, that is a full seven floor.
Right. Or maybe. You. Quickly. For a few. I was. Yeah. Right. That would be. Check here. So. Yeah. If all this. They were connected. As I said. Have. Happened. It was. Yes. That, but yes. Um. And. Because you're. Really. To. Show but a decrease in the, in the house. We, we have. An increase besides the. Conference. Okay. Why. So. Of course. That. It might be. He bought in fourteen thousand. Six hundred. Before. Four square feet. Uh, mainly has. Increase there to. To. To avoid that. Great. Uh, front. It's like this. This. Absolutely. That has. Place. It's. Talking about. Uh. And. Um. So based on. Or. For. Um. The. Uh, the. There is. That is what. The balance is. I think five thousand three hundred. Square feet. It represents. Uh, which is. Uh, only one fifty percent of the. Five. Twenty. Uh, twenty seven percent of the. Probably. Yeah, they're worth. Right. Uh, twenty four thousand two square feet. I guess. A hundred. Uh, six. A bit of sixty one percent of the. Uh, portion. Um, so. Yes. Um. At this point, I'm. The. I said. Uh, going. To. Uh, the. It. High grade. And I guess. What we. Want to.
Uh, I am. How did you. For such. My colleague. Uh, seems. Inside. This. Close. For footage. Uh, television. So. This. Uh, I guess. They are. If you put this part. So. The first. For. The. We have. Um, first. First. Among the first. Is the. Uh, this is. It's. Yeah. Both. So. And the. Person. To. It's. It's not. Our. Cast. It's. It's why. It's.
I checked. I, I checked this first. And I included a email from. For. Three. But. Sorry. Okay.
Yeah, it's. I can't. Order. It's not. Really. It's. Actually. Here. So. Actually, we have. The. Chris. Words. With this.
What's the actual. Say.
Yeah, so. I'm. Keep going. Catch. That's. On the first. I just want to see. Yeah. Okay. Excellent. But if. Let's. I get. That's. That's. Currently. On. The. Edition. That's. I. I guess. I have to. This. Yes.
It's. Fresh. Myself. So.
Uh, it, it is. Yeah, it is. Uh, when you, when you come into this path. Future. We have had three days to. But it's. Yes. 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 That's. Big picture. And I think that's a point that we can. Clearly. On what this is. I don't want to be. Shy. Or. It's obvious. For. There's another issue of. Uh, let's say going on a state life. And that's. About. The country. Uh, it's just. Maybe you could. You could put in. Places. That were. Homeable. And. You're. Honey. You have. You're. It's beautiful. It's. It's. It's on the steps. If it's home. There. Yeah. So now. We are. Asked you. If you. First. Into this. Uh, guest house. Where. It's. Such. A. Okay. I, I just. I guess. There are. Culture that we were. Having. With this. This. It's a beautiful. Culture.
That I. I'm just. If someone. Being. An. Guest house. Um. You would still have to. Everything. But, but, but. It would still be the same. Uh, uh, first. We still have. Look at. The. Or something. Um, and would someone. Being asked. Willing. To not push that. For. Completely. Every. Stories. To the point that.
More than two thousand. I mean, more than just four hundred square meters. So they're.
Well, if you should say that. Yeah, there's a reason that there. But it doesn't have a reason. We have sort of. This is wrong there. So you know, three or four foot. A few thousand foot. So yeah, yeah. They asked me to answer. Yours house. If you ask the question. And we don't want to spoil this exercise. But I would want to add you with the culture with the. We're in the past and it was. Count. It's soccer. But yes, you know, they're sort of. If you. We have the. You know, so. But culturally. The. I just. My walk outside. I see. They're on the water. It's a. I just. Really sad. So we are. They find others have their sense. It's really beautiful. But. Yeah. And. We're gonna see. The other culture. Yeah, I'm like. We're gonna be. And why do you approve something? That it's going to exacerbate. It sure explains. Uh. First five. And. Each. Um. It's 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 designed. It's designed. The most important is plus two. Three, three, four, five, six. Um. My friend gets your. Everything is. Super. Um. And. Um. It 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 regardless. Um. What it allows. It's interesting. It's not like this. One. It's vigorous than each other. That's why it's. It's not that it's a lot.
It isn't natural. And it's yourself. I mean, this is. We come out here and live here. Because we're fortunate to live in spring. While the area is slowly dwindling. Eating up my house and dog. And every section gets chopped down. It's one more as we replace. Sorry.
We're all inside. Because a lot of the patient. Like to visit. So if you're here. You can't walk. From a road. It's a walk. It's a walk. You know, that. It's your.
Get flat down.
It is. I understand. I just. I see a question. We'll see.
Can you tell me? It's there's so many trees and vegetation there. Do you have like a. A drawing just serves as a structure? Or I.
Yeah.
I sort of missed the. That you're doing to my share. Why don't you give us a little chat?
It's because. It's definitely. You definitely have a sort of this house. Before. Yes, I think. But when I say. When it's. Yeah.
So. It's a lot of.
And it it's more than elevated. I think for the. The. Because they are lifted up off the ground. It's just being a whole. A a structure. Just being a good structure. They. Cause they were. It's a lot of the. But. But I've said that the reason why it's there is to elevate. The. Because. Fifteen inches are going to be up there.
Is that considered the utilization and the mechanical? Are they the same?
No, there's an animal inside of the house. Um. That's one hundred and twenty five square feet. Uh, on the on the first floor. Because the mechanical room. And then the next mechanical. Is not considered viable. Under what's made. Uh, the the bill is going and also the. Yeah, same.
That means if you have five years' worth of house. Uh, if there's water. That. So we can tell you. I find that five years' worth. I've never. Ever heard. This.
You know. So in terms of. Four square feet. First floor area. It personally is only up to two hundred square feet. That would not be counting towards. Chapter. Next year. And then. In terms of that. This would have to be four. Anything that's. You have. That in your laundry rooms. And. Uh, so and and other things are. It's a big screen from. The the. From absolutely. It's on. The bushes.
So. Define.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean. Yeah. It is. The animal farm is exclusive. That are used for wandering. Or store for utility. Here. With the. There's spaces or service stories. And that is. That's what's it.
Those are excluded.
And that's. Black. That's.
Okay, so that you get that and then you get eight hundred square feet on top of that.
Right.
And that goes to the animal. That's the.
I think it's. Inside case. Yeah.
Um. So far as the. Um, like you said, that you should that that's also. You have a chemical room. It's a lot of. You should. Your air conditioner.
I think. You said. And I.
No, yes. If the. They're putting that more separate structure.
I prefer. Up there.
Okay, so.
Well, let's see. So the. Compression cover. Sitting like way up there.
I think there are four toilets. In April. The fourth left. One, two, three, four. Yeah, is that right?
Uh, I. If if that's what's. That's because. If that comes from the science. What you can do with the property is the number of. And if it has nothing to do with. I think fixed grid is on any.
No, that is. That's what. Beach back downstairs. That's the sign. Toilet. It's a beach. It's three bedrooms on street. And upstairs, there's a half.
So you're. Trying to. I don't know that it's wrong. What it do against. Time space.
Yeah.
Our best. Yes, I'm. With our issues. When. When turn the. Let's see now. Let's see. How to. At the. We can.
Thirteen.
Yeah.
Where do you see all the?
On the. On on zero.
Yeah, clear.
Well, I. I want to see. Zero. So that's. Uh, so. And I think great. Is that. That location. Four. What's that?
You're great.
And we're. Because the. Uh, the. Uh. Pretty sensitive. Um, and also because the. Uh, the. Make this angle four. Decent system. Which. Which eyes. For water. People. Obviously, that's.
And how the chamber. For area.
Yes.
Uh. I just. So. 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 We're just. Twenty thousand. Uh, that is. Uh. Uh, of this. Three. Of this. But then. The. Uh. Small. From three years.
So then you're twenty one feet.
And then. These. Uh, the. It's. This area. That's. We have. See that. The range.
So where possibly.
So. From there. From where. Uh, uh. From where. It's only changes. The. The range is. Where. I object. To. Just looking at. And around the house. We're not. We're focusing. Us. We're still. Have three. That's. Or not.
What is.
Uh, so. That's. We. 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 The first. Has. Eight. Six. I think. For example, this area is. Uh, it's. Six. And you have to. To keep up. That is. Three. Three words. So the first word. Just not that. But. What else? About this. And then. Like I said, the. This shit. I mean, this. So. It. Because. That's. It's. That's. 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 Basically. The. Because it's.
I'm trying to understand. I'm just running house. Thinking. That's. I think. So it's. I just can't beat the shit. Maybe. To be. Obvious. But it's. Okay, well, I could be. You know, the. The structure. There was. That. I got the. Because we're. Trying to. Trying to. As long as possible. Trying to. It's. You see. And if it's. Finally, you. You're talking. You're always. Or.
I. I expect.
But it's. It's like. It's. Some of these. And it's. How high. They're. Yes. Wow.
Um, because I I guess. We we break that. If we had. First structure there. Be there. In order. In order to. And. They have. Just your. That's. That's. And then. You can. So then you would serve.
So.
So right. So if you just have. The. So just. You just don't have. The. Before. You have to. To. Eight.
Well, I think. So what you do. Driving down that road. You see everything out. And out. You can see them from different parts. You know, that is. How to get. This much traffic. And then this much. Yes. Of what has. Your. Or. So. So. I mean, I'll just. I have. I've never seen. This. Whatever. But just. In my mind, riding down that road and imagining. I stand there from these areas. And having the eighty. Then having the fourteen. That's. Fourteen feet. Very. Big difference. So it's four. One. Um. Yeah. Far. Yes.
But it's. 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 My. We're. We're. You guys. I'm.
I think. Yeah. So. I will. Put down. Next. So. But it's.
You have. Your. Send. Insurance. With this. Like. That's.
And you can now. Yes. It's a house.
So. What's. This can't be. Hard to house. What is the reason why that? You can't. Growing up. To get. Yeah, why does he? I'm not sure. I understand why you need a separate shed for this.
Very.
Those are very few questions that I. I can't talk. And just. I have. But. But if if you. If. If the. If the. If the. If the. That's. I like. So.
Yeah, right. Well, really. If we can. Not. Science. How does. You know, again, you got here. For. The minimum. Uh, size of the. Of. The house. But I haven't heard. Are you. Why you have to have. A a shed. In the. This.
Right.
Um. So just the point of. Some of the. The. Things. That. I like. So. And. This. Because we can. Present. Present. So. You just. All. Different. I'm sorry. I'm. Uh, I'm pretty sure. Like you say.
Just. I think. Yes. Sure.
Uh, there. Um. It's looking. In. Uh. There are. Super. Trees. And. So. That are. In. Protect. Their. Um. There's. Uh. These. I just. I think. That's. Uh, that. There is. This. You. Uh, it's. I'm. She. They'll. I wonder. The person. Being. Right. In my. What. What. But.
Yeah. For. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I think. Lots. Of. It's. Uh, okay. So. This is. So. These. Free. Books. Will be. Uh, technical. Instruction. And the ones. The teams. On the. Here. Are. The train. Plan. And free. For. Exercise. Um, and. The ones. That. Are. The. What. The. The. Process. Yes. Uh, it's. A foreign. Spanish. Of. I mean. A lot of. You can. Have. Something. And then we have. Uh. So. So. That's. Because. So. What is that? I love you. It's. True.
Right. So where's that shop? If you're the neighbor. Who said. You have the. Uh, the. 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 How you can be. Will see that for this. Size. He said. Have. That. He's. A. For.
There is. It's. You. Crazy. House. You have. A. You know, it's. Well, like. Well.
That's. Just. Like. Why. I'm saying. Why. I'm saying. How you. I'm saying. To. For the side. That's. That. List. This. On your. Now.
I believe that if we're. Falling. To. So. It would be cut down. And then there'll be spotlight on. The. On the stuffs. Of what was there. You know. For. In. To.
Why would you take. Your.
Um. It's. It's a good question. Uh, but that. That was the only. Actually. The. Uh, reason. That. If you. Were. Preferring. Any. Change. That's just in the house. I I think that's. The reason. Uh, it's been a lot of. That.
It's all about the part she had her.
Nope.
So what did you say?
This is the whole line of fire.
Part of it.
But now it's just to fill all. And uh it's it all. Celebration.
But what about size and second, that's more of an.
If that was if that was.
And. It's all about the vendors. Second, can we determine the size of your secondary system? Why does it have a vendor? So good energy vendors. But give us some space. Now I have a little less amount to manufacture to.
Okay, so. It's. We're gonna be here, then I don't see it for years. But you know, fuck, you were having to do the entire. But you have to.
But.
They're trying to get.
Uh.
I think I should first. On this is. Yeah, sorry, sir. This is a professional. Yeah, I think it was. And then we'll do the pressure. The pressure. That's what it was. You know, we're trying to. What was your. Well, for sure. Your thing is like to be close. And I teach you. You have to be honest with it. And they're pretty sure. And yeah, so. Yeah, trying to ask my three years longer. Guys on the house. Uh. Raveling flags over here. That's. It's a wish I would have. And so, but I hear condition.
Yeah, we're being safe. She never find that be so nice on the side of the water. But just.
Right, yes.
Sure. Sign that. On my. Sure.
Perfect.
Why do you share the share for your internal?
Just the answer. Moving answers. Part of the thing I have just put here. Or did you hear? That is. And really, for me. Uh, it's probably you. And this was so. Part of the chemicals. I just. This is a policy video. You have all of your. I think so. On your uh picture. We have one in the. Last issue. The first time that it's. Yeah, it's something that. Defense logic is. So. I would say. Of course, it's. I'm not sure. Do you have here? I mean, it's there on the chat. And we're putting out the house. Even if. House. On the architecture. I'll come here. It's uh. Let's let's see. Okay. When I say that would be okay. I don't. But I think that right now. I'm I'm going to see everything that's that. I can't leave nothing else. Very obvious, like it's like. It's one of the reasons why. It's a best. It's something we said. Because we want three of them. And then we. We're gonna have that. Okay. Three is the size of the house. Okay. What's the word? It's saying on that. Okay. Three is the size of the country. Well, that's good. But so it's this. Partially like process. And it's why it's this. This like again. This point. So. I don't. Completely understand. Where you're coming from. I need to. He said. I don't. And also. Um. I mean, it's. Anything else that he has been offering. I'm only just. Like, should we have anything to to? Have the. That could be like one.
So where is it wrong? I wish um. You know, you picture that. You do any streetwise trouble. I would be dead.
It's good to. You know, there's. You can't hear.
No.
I think a hundred years ago. I don't care. Oh, God. I should.
It's. I think that's. I think that's.
Yeah, so uh. So we're. Uh, this is part of me. Uh, that's not my brother. And this is the part.
What? Outside.
The the friend.
So is it a share party very well made now?
Yeah, I mean, it's. It's a lot. These times. So the party is. And the gate is just to the left. Correct. Yes.
And the main house is to the left. Or not sure.
Yes. Okay, I think you. I'm. I guess. Over. Okay. Well, just a question. Um, it's. It makes more. To. I remember. Yeah. We have some sign structure. It'll be a long. Information. But it's. We're hoping. You're gonna have to. Uh. Six four. So very. So. That's just. Yeah, you. You're. So. I'm not sure. Thank you. It'll be.
I should. I don't. I just. Actually.
I think. Watch. Uh, watch. Yeah, I think. Last. I think. My boy. But um. I think. Okay. Okay. Okay, that's. From the Christian. And that's. And that's. Um, where are you? The top. At the. Since you said that every that. Everything is okay and designed to. But for. Uh, um. Uh, the. Substitution. I mean, and I. Um, part part of that is. It's the. The subject. And it's. Look at this reminder. Was the. Where the. Where the. I mean. I try. Here. Uh, because it is a hundred. In front service orders. Because the. Starts with. Um, so. If you. I think. Your expression. Underneath. What's that? The thing is. I think. Then. Um, I think. Absolutely. I think. Yeah. I think. I think. So. I think. I think. This might. Friends. And they provide. Contact. Uh, great. People. Actually. And then. And then actually. On the. Class. Uh, they. They have. Like. Not you. That's crazy. Um, I don't know. You know, housing is only is a big thing today as well. Um, so. Uh. But. I kind of. I have to just. About. But we actually. And then. Question. But the. But the. This is. Is there really? A. It's a. Maybe. Excuse me. Uh, I think. It's. Silent. And. But. What I think. It's. I want to. And. And. But.
First. This is anybody. You have to do it. We can set. The. What a little bit. I don't know how much that is in distance. It's like. Twenty thirty feet. We're almost. To the house.
Right. Did you set the. Right? Through all the plates? I think. We will have to update. Other. Um. The. 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 I mean. And maybe. Uh, do it. Our. See. I mean. Update. Everything else. I mean, uh. So. Okay. Also. It's something that's actually. We are. Part. And so. But. Makes up. Sorry. I just think. It's a. Something. That you. Play. Um. I think. More. That if you look. To. I think. It's. Area. Situation. I have. True. Yeah. What. Great. Right. And. That. You know. Especially. One more. Can be. On. Increase. The. To. Start. Is that a turret? It's.
What is that? Is that where? This under?
No, it's like a. It's. Sort of.
Like.
I said. What he has. Versus. There is a detail. But it was. Or. You know. So they. Take the. You know. You know.
That's what. Our. Right. Yeah.
We're. So.
Uh, I don't. But it's just integrated. The main house is the last thing. We're just looking. This is also. Our game here. We're assuming like this. Or. Something. G. Think. How are you? And.
Oh, how even though it's. Put. The.
Well, it's. Stop it.
Right. Yeah. Actually, I'm walking. Most of the stuff. It does. Uh, we find out that it's. But. Actually. Party. Uh, it it's all. On that. It's the. Project. I mean. Uh, and there's. That. With. Obviously. I'm trying to remember exactly. Once. But it's. It comes out. So. What's the? Pretty. We're just wondering. You know, but it might be nice. If you have. This. The show. See. You know. Uh, it's. It's. Uh. Same. Serious. You know. You could. Show.
How many? I have a plus. Yeah. It's elevation. I think. Issue.
Yeah, the elevation allows. Where you. Put. In. It's on. Make sure. That.
Really much. I already asked you. Twenty six. Twenty six seconds. That's.
Are you? The same. As. Well, I'll. Only be. Yes. We're. Great.
Yeah. I don't think. The. Things. In the. Shop. Or. If. The elevation.
Yes.
I think.
Well. I I think. Nice meeting. The. Progress. Was. Went. On this. Ability. Like. Which. And then you. Told us. You. And. Come back. So. Yeah. You. For. I didn't. Appreciate. The. That you know. Come back. You know. Some issues. The the. Part. I. I. And. A full size. Set is in. Um. The. We usually try to. Limit the number of. Two. Three. But I said. I'm looking at the town. Prefer. You know. You stand. But you.
Well, if you. Have. The screen. It's really. How you. So.
You can. Part of. The. Obviously. From. The. Juke. It's. Had. The. Back down. The. We're. The. You know. We have. What? Juke. All. The. But. I. Right. God. Speaking. Yeah. All of those. Got there. So. Just. With. The. Of course. So. I. Well. The last one. I had was. Um, recently. I told. You. For. Uh, to. To. Directly. To. Other. Players. Before. Keep. Out. Uh, thirty. Yes. Twenty. Big secret. Right. Mine is. That's. Pretty. Yeah. And. It was. What? The. What? The. Yes. So. And. You know. You know. It's. So. I guess. This. Yeah. Cause you. You. You say. Exactly. It's exactly. It's. It's. You know. That. Yes.
Um, so. It does. Like. Very. But maybe. There could be a. Black. Light. Too strong. And what? This is. I love. You're a beautiful guy. The first time. Yeah. I don't. I mean. So. I don't remember that.
It it. It did. If we're screening from the view. And which. They were. Because there are. Uh, several. Um. Great. Seers. These are one. J. Um, that. Come. With. Screen. That. You.
So maybe we should have that.
When you just. Right.
Well, you should have the old one. Then we just. First. See. Or. For a. Seers. Or.
It's. Great. Seers. And. Between. Green. And. Great. Great. So. Uh, sorry. I'm sorry. But. Hey. All of the. Everything. Is. At the house. Um, that is. It's.
So even more. You. We have. More. Illustrations of that. I think there's a. A feeling. Here. Would like to see these structures. Of.
Thank you. So. Yeah. I'm just. Wondering. Different. Uh. So I'm going to. Add the. Survey. And. It's. Very. But you can be up there. To. Reflect. What we find. Change. In. I'm going to discuss. With the architect. And architect. About. Rejoicing. I. In. And. The. Um. So. I'm. Um. Provide. Um. It's. I. Provide. Um. And. Discuss. With. The. Architect. Whether. The. Uh. Forced. Turn. Area. Reminisce.
Okay.
I'm.
I see.
They did.
I received.
I actually asked. They just seem to have a bad speech. Um, last week actually.
So yeah, they're just like. It's not me, guys.
So yeah, so I need a motion to.
Your age.
Need a motion to ensure that he can say that we brought him to the fore. But it's just like.
Well. That'd be right. Well, there are here. You know, this is saying this is going on this time. You can't see him like.
Yeah. Exactly. It could be. All the.
Okay. That's good. You're missing that. That's the fault. Next time. There's no. Yeah. I don't see that. That's why we did that. Alright, so that's some good. That's all. So now it's a nice summer. It was July. Uh, you know, see the. Okay. Well, I really need to say back. But. And for one. Uh, this question was called. So we submitted that. And you play. And that big survey show. Uh, the poster. I said that was so fair. Like, this is a good to do a free form offer that contains same as per footage. Pass the screen for those people. The buffer. Which we. Uh, you guys also want to. I think something or. Please use recent minutes. One, two, three, four, five, thirty. I've been out there. I was pressing on all the others. I'm all. Yeah. Um, there are some better course that have been there. Prior to. Yeah. I think this is. I'm sure from a thirty three fifty years. The back. So I really. My point. We have those like two. I just. When they have the whole of this. So I. I think that's. So it's a hundred and fifteen. If you have. It's too much. It's true. Well, it's. Same. They're. They're. And also somebody. I'm. Exactly. Honestly, you know, if you were. I was. Look at the. Yeah. So. I appreciate. I think that's it.
Tell them that. I'm happy to answer. Well.
Next. You could. Working. So. Oh, I can. You can. You're pretty sure that. It's a. It's a. It's a. It's sort of. Um. It does. It does. That's. It's. Yeah. I'm. I mean. It's. In. I couldn't. I mean, people. He just like. See your. Like. I mean, what's going to happen? It's going to be. Because in the box. Or like, which we. Really. It's a. It's. The. It's. That's. No. Well. Um. It's. 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 We get that. I want. First.
Unfortunately, when you are. For.
It's. It's on this. Well, I mean, I'm. I think. I mean. It's a. But. I just. I think. About. So. I'm. Congratulations.
Did you tell the project that the. That was. My.
I don't. Yeah. So. Yeah. The. The. It's my. Best. My. It's. My. Yes. I'm. 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 Yeah. 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 Yeah.
So. It's. It's.
Yeah.
And we take this. You know, all the. How it is. And like that fifty percent of horse. They will go. Put. Down. To. First. And. Yeah. Uh. If. She would plan a tree.
I mean, I can tell. That's. So. Yeah. It's.
Well. You're such. Should be.
Right. Like. We don't. We're. We're on the. The air. You know. Open up. We. Just. I'm. I'm saying. You're. It's like. The. From. Just. We're.
Like. You're. Yeah. You.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. The. Well. In. What. That. You're. Well. Trees. So. She.
Yeah. I mean. Uh. A little bit. That's. Up. Yeah.
So this is mostly just about. Seeing. Our.
Yeah. I. I. So. Everybody. I think. We're. From. Yeah. I'm. I'm. I tell you. Well. You know. This. You know. This person. Check. There's. First. You have. This. That. Lots of days. We're. It's. In. Yeah. Yeah. And it's. Yeah. It's. Very. You know. It's. Same. She's saying. I get. Every. Here's. Some. Sex. And. They're. So. I'm. So. I believe. I'm. I'm. It's. Yes. Or. She's. Oh. Good.
Well.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
I know. I. Off. The. That's. I was. At. First.
That's. Right. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Yes. So there's. Something. I think. I thought. Which I. So. Everybody. I just. I just. For me. The. Part. Yeah. So. But. The. Decisions. It's. Coming. Twenty. Twenty. Years.
And. A lot of people that. I worked. They had. Some. Having. Uh. This. Now. That's.
Yeah. They. They. Yeah.
And they have. We have. Sure. People. Sure. They.
I don't. Think. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's. 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 The. Center. Of. Their. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's. That's. Two. Three. Four. Five. Yeah.
So. I'm. Doing. Any. More.
Yeah. I think. That's. You. I'm. Sorry. I'm. Actually. Yeah.
One. All. That. Is. That. That's.
Well, this. Happened. We. Don't. Be. Yeah. Yeah. The. So. Well. So. I. So. Not. We. Have. Yes. The. Request. From. The. Uh. Uh. By. So. Project. I guess. I. Can't. Well. Yeah. So. So. You. I just. Asked. One. Note. To. Entire. People. I. I want to make sure this. Addressed. And that was. The. Part. The. The. If. We. Have. Structures. Is. That. We. Have. People. On. The. Should. Be. A lot. Of. You. On. The. Survey. It's just. Like. The. Same. There's. A. Two. Structures. That. You're. So. They're. Just. Like. It's. Like. That. You can. See. About. The. Survey. It's. It's. Um. It's. It's. It's less than. The. In. The. Up. I think. It. That. Comes. To. You. Say. Like. Less. I think. There's. A lot of stuff. On. That's. Yeah. That's. The. Actually. I'm. Just. That's. What. You. Yes. Is. It's. I'm. Looking. At. That. Okay. I see. Okay. That's. My. Question. That. I'm. Like. That's. I'm. Going. To. Ask. You. Question. What's. I think. My. Question. Okay. That's. Your. Yeah. You guys. Real. Hard. You guys. Like. That. You. Obviously. See. That. When you talk. To. What. It says. Power. Push. Me. Just. With. This. I. Didn't. Do. This. The. Subtlety. I. Like. That's. Like. That's. The. Right. It. Like. The. Subtlety. How. I don't. Want. Except. You know. When. It. Says. Power. Push. Was. I'm. Being. That. Remember. Okay. Okay. Do. You. Have.
No. Good. Running. To. Three.
Yeah.
Good. Thing.
I'm. Just. I. You. Are. It's. Your. Own. But. I. I. And. I. 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 This. Uh. That was hooking up to. To the house sanitary system. So. The. The. It's. Been. From. To. The. House. And. Then. Connect. Into. The. And then. Little. Run. Into. The. System. It's. All. Nice. To. Be. And. That. Was. Designed. Same. Questions. We're. Waiting. For. That. You. Get. I mean. They're. Got. See. Point. That's. That's. Proper. Yeah. That's. What. I'm. Sorry. About. This. Thing. You. Guys. But. So. It's. 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 Yeah. Yeah. So. The. Truth. Is. Much. Much. I mean. I'm. Well. Or. The. House. Like. This. I mean. It's. The. They. Kind. Of. Same. You know. Anybody. Or. This. But. They. Maybe. I. For. Change. You know. You're. Some. Right. Probably. Some. But. I can. See. What. I'm. Saying. The. For. It's. Like. I'm. I'm. Really. Good. How. To. Now. Really. I mean. We. Want. To. Be. I have. Different. Problem. There's. Something. Like. I guess. You. Have. This. I mean. I. Tell. The. Game. For. You. Know.
Oh. It's. Good. It's.
Oh, it's gorgeous, not good.
Very good.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I said, if you saw this on a tree, I'd say, sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Say what?
The rest of my words is, you know. Sometimes doing this one on a tree is very much important.
Okay.
It's.
If you were going to play a part in the development of my last, it seems like it's something that I see very, very, very. Okay.
It's really about the trees, you know, and the seed, you know, and the forest, and the other stuff. It's much less. Uh, the next move is, is there something? Or have that be a good direction? Or I think everything is going to be fine. Because you have this one. Yeah.
Of course, here. This is a great question. Well, three minutes. How do you say that?
Yeah. Probably feel a little shitless, but we're here for a second. Okay.
All right.
Um.
A three man.
Okay. I thought you were going to say, maybe I should ask Ray Chek to draw up the permits or pretty down. Okay. I said.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay. All the things.
All the things.
Uh.
Thank you. Are you alive tonight?
I'm attracted by snakes, not by the force of nature. All right.
Okay.
So.
So.
Yes, yes. This is how you're studying this. You got this way of being the way. So, hey. Yeah. I think you're.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm telling you, I'm having a difficult time listening to you very well, but you you don't sound well. You're a little garbled.
This is, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Scott, can you talk?
Yes, I'm talking. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey. I'm having a very difficult time listening to you. You you speak very well, but you sound garbled. Okay. Here's a good, I I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to discuss this project. The last time I met with you, uh, or discussed things with you was for 194 Josh Schwartz. We had this discussion about what was happening to the shoreline of Sag Harbor Cove. And we we talked about the erosion and I and I I did hear input from from the committee about living shorelines. So right after we had our hearing, uh, and you finally made a decision on on Mr. Schwartz at 194, Mr. Spiegel asked me to look at his property and say, what can be done? It's thorough review and guess what? I I have a a project proposal for a living shoreline. This, uh, this, we have come, we've only submitted this application to you for your review. We haven't submitted to the D E C, the Army Corps, or anybody else. I felt it was important that we come back to you and discuss with you because this would be the first project in the community, uh, with a living shoreline and, uh, work with you to come up with a product that will meet your standards, be the way that we want to do something, as I said, for the shoreline here in Sag Harbor. My associate on this, uh, project is Jane Castello. Unfortunately, Jane Castello has got COVID today. So we kept her home. Okay, we and, uh, so, uh, otherwise she would be here to discuss, uh, the project. I gave you some, I I did my, I I had no PowerPoint presentations today. That's the good news. Okay? Uh, what I'd like to do is again, just discuss, you know, why there's a need for this project. You know, in our last presentation, when I talked to Schwartz, uh, we talked about the massive erosion that had occurred on Sag Harbor Cove. And it was at 192 that had erosion of, uh, in the last 19 years of 34 to 54 feet, uh, at his property. I loo- I looked at, uh, four different types of stabilization, uh, options, four different types of living shoreline options in in my report, uh, starting at age 18, we kind of go over those those options. Uh, but basically what we're proposing is just offshore of the bulkhead, uh, line is a four, uh, rock sill, uh, structures. And what we call submergent, they're only going to go to mean high water, or mean high water elevation to knock down the, uh, the wave action. Anytime you see these living shorelines, they actually go way above high water. I want to keep this one low about the wave action here is, uh, boat waves, northwest winds, nothing substantial. When it's high tide, you're not even going to see this structure. I thought that would best for the community. Uh, I looked at a little bit lower, wasn't effective, but many of the ones you see are very high, two, three feet above high water. We don't need that. Uh, and then behind the, uh, the four, uh, rock sill walls, uh, we're going to place sand. I'm going to build an intertidal marsh. A marsh had been there for many, many years. The bog. And I'm pretty much going back to the same footprints. We're going to leave the high marsh out there. We're going to leave that on the third. But as you go further landward, there was an area of uplift that had been a buffer. When the house was, this new house was, uh, was approved, it called for a buffer. There was a substantial amount of, uh, native plant, uh, plants planted there. They all died because they got, whatever reasons, uh, it may be, uh, too much salt exposure and things like that. So when I looked at this project, I said, what can I do that would retain a natural shoreline? So I'm proposing, uh, raising the grade about two feet and building like a little natural dune, uh, just before the lawn area of of the Spiegels. I'd like to. The purpose of that is to, uh, what is reaching the property of Mr. Spiegel, acting as a natural kind of shoreline with a bolt, uh, uh, a dune, kind of bulkhead, odd structure. But also maybe give some habitat for domed back turtles. I'd like to lay their eggs in the backside of a dune. Uh, it would give us more of a natural shoreline going into the high marsh, going into the intertidal marsh, then going to the rock, uh, the rock sills. The rock sill walls, when we, I looked at them, there's a whole bunch of, and again, if you look at between eight, eighteen, page 18 and, uh, 2200 report, you'll see it, but they do this big angled, uh, rock wall as a footprint of about 12 feet. We're going to do just a straight, uh, wall, about five foot footprint and stack granite or, or, you know, native rock in that location. Uh, first off, because as a smaller footprint, second off, it gives you a a lot of attachments where I can get, you know, uh, seaweeds, animals grown. It's a very interesting area because when you go there, there's a lot of, uh, fucus species or, uh, rock weed in that location. Must be the water quality is outstanding. And I think if we do more of a rock habitat on the outside, I'll get more of that, uh, rock weed, you know, coming in in that area. And then you go to the marsh, uh, as you go further landward. So I did a a small footprint, but again, if you look at the four different options, you'll see the difference, uh, that we went through in the report. Uh, we think this has a minimum footprint for rock. The other thing is when they do these big angled rocks, they can slip. There's like a core rock beneath it and then you put angle rock on top. That can slip. Like we're going to do it one and a half to two ton. It should stay stable. And if it does go unstable, you can, you can fix it pretty easily. So it's kind, and I worked with, uh, Jack Castello from Castello Marine on on the design with Jane, and we thought this is the best design. If you want to go in and do it once, backfill it, plant the marsh, go the upland in, bring sand, build a doing area, plant that with, uh, beech grass and other natives, native species, if you guys suggest that, we'll do that also. But again, we want to get back to the shore and do that. We think it's a right product. It's going to connect in, it's going to connect right into that, uh, south's property line of, uh, Josh Schwartz, that bulkhead that we had the discussion with. It's going to go across 134 feet of Mr. Spiegel's property. Uh, it will end, uh, at a point where the bog on the southern property comes. There's a little bit of rock there. We'll tie right into the, uh, and hopefully afford protection also to the north side of the, of that, uh, of that marsh area. It's, it's an intertidal marsh bog area under attack, still eroding, but we think it's the way to, uh, we think this will help minimize some wave damage from the northwest to that south property. Uh, we also think potentially if we do, this product is, uh, is successful, it will not, it'll not require Mr. Schwartz, or probably may not have to even do his return with the rock wall and all the things we had, we had done to the other proposal. We do this right, I think we'll, uh, we'll be fine. We'll actually hold this this bit of shoreline. Uh, in this project, I'm just doing the rock and planting of, uh, intertidal marsh and the dune area in the upland area. We're not proposing any oases and things like that. That's something maybe in the future we can consider, uh, on the backside, but and you'll see, I'll, I'll have three inlets into this, uh, intertidal marsh back bay area, for lack of a better word. If you think about it, the rock sill area is like a little barrier island knocking the wave action and the inlets are the areas in between. That will allow the wa- the water to flow in into there and drain out. And, uh, when the water drains out, having the rock on both edges will prevent kind of erosion, things like that. But again, it's, uh, we're working probably, and I'm almost at the same footprint that had been there prior, in the prior title wetlands before they started eroding away about about 20 years ago. So I'm just going to get that footprint back again. Uh, so I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at the product or you have some thoughts, uh, what you're thinking about this project? Because again, it's the first for Sag Harbor. I want to, I want to work with the local community, make sure this is the right project for you. And then I'll go, you know, chase the fed, you know, the work with the federal and the and the state governments and and the Southampton trustees. Uh, this product, you know, again, I've, I've reviewed the, uh, the state policy on on tidal wetlands, uh, and, uh, their their guidance document. You've probably seen this one for a living shoreline. It it pretty much beats all of that. And, uh, but it's a, it's a local project. It's the first. I want to do it right. I want to do one that will meet the needs of the community. So I don't have an opportunity to discuss it. I, again, I, I think maybe next time I'm going to come in person.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, but I just want to have an opportunity, uh, introduce the product to you, uh, to the committee and and, uh, let me know if you have any, any kind of, any, uh, initial thoughts on on this project design or the product type itself, I guess.
Well, because we're there, I think I really appreciate the, appreciate the effort.
I don't think you can hear us. We can.
Can you hear, can you hear me at all?
Hey, John, I'm, I'm okay with you, John. I can hear you.
All right.
John, you may have to be the spokesman, spokesperson, excuse me.
Chick, what do you think?
I, I can hear, uh, Marion too.
Yeah. Hey, Chuck, can you hear me?
I can hear a chick, yeah.
Oh, there you are.
What happened?
Uh, I do think that, you know, you're going to want to do a pre-app with D E C and, um, talk to the town trustees. Obviously, we're a separate permitting agency and, um, you know, I think it's got some good points. Uh, I always worry about rock structure in tidal wetlands, um, but I, I see what you're doing here. I like the diagrams. I think they're showing well. Um, I don't think the fill is impacting any natural existing tidal wetlands. And we know through your previous work that, you know, it's areas that's subject to high erosion. Um, the one rock wall or breakwater, rock sill, breakwater on the south side is very close to an existing intertidal marsh. And at least for the time being, looks to be pretty healthy. And I just would, um, you know, just look at that very cautiously to make sure that we're not going to in any way break down that existing rock that exists in that intertidal marsh. The other areas are very dynamic and they're already subject to erosion. And I, I don't get the total picture of the dune, um, uh, the dune burn, but I'm assuming it's in the areas where the shoreline's active eroding and of course not in areas where there's existing natural vegetation. But that wasn't really shown through that long plan yet. So I understand this is really just for discussion. I think it has some merit. Um, you know, I look at, as I said, for a little more detail and just better pictorial on the dune, like be careful about your south rock sill breakwater and the existing intertidal marshes. And the rest seems to have some good merit. Um, could be considered.
You know, Chuck, that's, thank you. That's, that's great input. You know, uh, you know, this is the kind of thing that, you know, I'm okay with baby steps. And if, in fact, maybe we just do it primarily between the bulkhead of, uh, of 194 and maybe just go to the dock area, uh, which is, you know, the areas are kind of disturbed already on the property and then leave that south portion alone. That could kind of be our control to see what happens. And and I, and I agree with your caution that maybe we don't want to put a semi-hard structure next to that living, uh, existing intertidal marsh. Yeah, that makes good sense. Yep. So I'm, uh, but I'll, uh, that's, that's great. And I, and we can, we can pull back on that. And as far as the dune, yeah, it's, it's certainly, it's, you know, it's the area, there's a, that existing, uh, lawn goes to a fence area. And it was an area that we planted. It's about 25 to 35 feet wide. We did a lot of native, native species. They all die for some reason. It's now crad grass. And I thought, let's get rid of that. Let's build a nice, about two foot high. The grave will raise about two feet. It will and this, and it will just raise it up a little bit, prevent some flooding. But what it will also do is all that runoff that's coming from the property of upland, that should prevent it from going into the waters of Sag Harbor Cove, the way I'm going to, we're going to build that. So I want.
Could be, could be done in back there and habitat. It's, you know, it's a good dune, planting a plant.
Yeah.
For a few reasons.
Okay. All right.
If I understand this, uh, in the, uh, planted area that's, um, east of these, uh, stone walls, the rocks, what happens when the tide goes out? Do you, will you get erosion? Um, if I reach this right, water is coming in through the rock wall up into the, uh, the new marsh area. When the tide goes back out, um, is it, is there going to be erosion between those, those little rock walls?
Well, you know, it, it really, you know, what's going to happen, uh, I think, uh, Will, is, is, is that water comes out, we're going to see that, you know, that you can see that we, we go a little past, you know, we have that outside, uh, sill. And as the water pours off to the north and to the south out of here, uh, and it'll also go to the south, you know, by the dock area. Uh, yeah, you could get some erosion between them, but it's really how, how fast, how, how much water comes in there because depends how fast that tide moves out. It kind of moves slow. It won't erode. Uh, but it's, you know, the one thing on, on this living shoreline, it's going to be, has to be monitored, 100% on a seasonal basis. It's got to be monitored. Yeah, we'll go on here. It's just not COVID and come back. We'll, we'll be, we'll, we'll set up a, a monitoring program and and look and and look for that. And I'm just going to put a note, a potential for erosion, uh, as.
It's something that, that we talked about, uh, quite some time ago, which was, if you zoom out, if you look at the whole area, there's, there are problems. And I think this is, uh, it's exciting. It's really exciting to think about solving a problem in a dynamic way. And, um, I think this is a, I think this is exciting. It'll be really interesting to see how.
It's exciting to me too. It's the first one I've ever done too. So we'll be excited together. Uh, but I think it would be a great demonstration project, uh, for the community and at large. And that's, and and I think chicks gave me some good advice, but I really wanted to work with you guys and have where you want to be with this project before I go knock on their doors. So I'll, that, I can work that, 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 what I have to do. I mean, I, I think the concern, I, state agencies are usually in support of this. The federal government, the Army Corps of Engineers has a nationwide permit that supports this. So I think I'm going to get the support. Uh, the Southampton trustees, I'm going to really, I, I think they support these kind of shorelines. I'm going to have to deal with them because it's a first one in this community, in this code. And if we do it right, we got to do it right because we don't want it to fail because this is, this is the future, this kind of a stabilization, you know, uh, working the, getting us back to where we had been. Yeah.
Two questions on, again, what you're calling your rock sill breakwater. And I think if I read this correctly or wrote it correctly, that you said that, that it would actually be underwater at high tide.
Yes, uh, John, if you, uh.
And I'm pretty clear how tall they are in relation to, to the high tide. Uh, it was at what point did they become exposed? And and the second related question i- is how much water can flow through it? Uh, yeah. And I don't know whether you remember the, you know, the hard years, the old breakwater versus the new breakwater. Uh, but the old breakwater had sort of jumbled rocks that the water could flow between. And for some reason, they rebuilt it and jammed all the rocks, you know, together so water couldn't flow through the bank anymore. Um, which I, I love to mistake it, but, uh, I'm asking, I think the size of the rocks, you know, what gaps there are going to be in between, like, you know, it explains the difference, uh, in this plan, maybe in terms of the, of the possible erosion that you're chasing. You got.
In every, I, the rule is going to be, uh, it's going to go from, uh, mean low water elevation 1.5 to about 0.8. So I would say it's going to be a little over two feet, about two feet, four inches, two feet, six inches, somewhere around there it's going to be.
Yeah.
From top to bottom, top, yep.
And. Yeah.
There's a cross section there that shows that, it shows the bottom of the structure and then it shows mean high water, you know, where it's going to be. And so you can see we're doing that, uh, base. We do three, two, one. Uh, as far as permeability, John, I talked to Jack Castello, how, when he puts the rocks up, do we leave a little crack or something like that in to try to let that water go through, you know? That's, that's a, that's another, that's another part of the design we can work on, you know? Because if it doesn't affect the stability of the, of the breakwater, you're right, because all of a sudden I'll have, not only have the water come out through the, the, the sides, but it could actually permeate that wall if, if you do it right. So it's just how, how big a gap we would leave when those rocks, we bottom up. Do we leave two inches? Do we tighten it up like that? I mean, you know, I mean, you know, we're hoping to keep it tight, but maybe we can do a gap. Is that, is that kind of what you're thinking? We need to have more.
I guess it's sort of a question as, as to what you said, you know, when you were, you were talking about possibly getting erosion because of, of a fast water.
Channelized.
Between them.
Yeah, exactly. I got it. Yep.
If, if the crystals were permeable so that some of the water was, was going through them, it would also slow down the speed of the, of the water that.
Okay.
Goes through. And I'm just, just waiting and sort of looking at it and thinking that, well, you're better off having a rock sill that, that will, yeah, yes, it will slow down the water flow in and out, but there can be some flow, you know, in between and, and, and through, through the rocks.
Yep.
Creates a better environment for, for marine life if, if you have, if you have gaps in, in there and you have some options for things to, you know, to grow, uh, to grow in there. Uh, so it's just, it's a question of size of the rocks, placement, what the gaps are, how permeable.
Yeah, well, uh, let me talk to Jack about making the wall permeable and leaving some gaps. Because as you say, if the water, instead of flowing out through two main channels, will throw out through a thousand pinholes, we probably have a lot less current going out on, on an outgoing.
Chuck and Chick, uh, is Scott Peterson still working this area much?
I'm not sure, yeah.
Haven't worked with along these types of things, but he has knowledge there.
Yeah. But, yeah, I saw some natural shorelines that you did up on the North Ward, that you made a part of that group. He's got some good ideas. And maybe on the North Ward, they've been doing some natural shorelines.
Okay.
And Joyce.
Yep.
She's another one who's, um, I think quite knowledgeable about this.
Sure.
Do you know her?
No, but I'll, I can give her a call, yeah.
Exetering partnership.
Okay, all right.
He's. He's a resource.
And Chuck, I do want to echo what John said, and I think that also speaks to one of Will's comments before, just about potential erosion between, uh, the structures where those channels are. Uh, and I had the same thought, so I'm just going to echo that. Um, just another thought, looking at the plan view, uh, it seems that the sill just north of the dock comes very close to the shore. And I almost wonder if the configuration could potentially be reversed, where you put that shorter segment in the middle, closer to the shore, move the other two longer ones out a little bit, maybe meander them a little so they don't look so linear and have a little bit more overlap. Uh, just a thought, but I think it would follow the natural shoreline better. Uh, it would give you more intertidal marsh between the, uh, structure just towards the dock and the shore. And just be a little more naturalized and possibly more successful.
Okay, yeah, sure. Will, I'll, I'll redo that and I'll, I'll try to put a little curvature into it. Is that we kind of looking for it to kind of mimic the shoreline a little bit? Because your shorelines aren't straight, if you think about it, right?
Yeah, but I think I'd like, you know, the area.
What you do.
The area proposing titles, if it's kind of even.
Gotcha.
Well, I think rather than letting out the shoreline or the edge of the height.
Can't hear you. Now I can.
And line up to the perpendicular to like the, the fetch or how the tide comes. You know, what, what direction is the tide coming into this property? What direction is the wind coming in the most often? Because that's going to be blocking the water. And I think that's the force that's transmitted through the water that you're trying to mitigate.
Yep, perfect. All right. We'll look at those points. Good points. Thanks, Marion.
And I'm just, I'm just sitting here thinking about this. Thank Mr. Spiegel for being really minded about this because he was part of the, um, the hearing before. I sounded like, oh, what up, happy? And I'm really happy with it. Yeah, I really will.
Yeah, thank you. We, uh, we, uh, we did a lot of talking, had a lot of discussions and, and we want to do the right thing for the community and the right thing for them too. Yeah. And, and thanks for giving us the lightning, the lightning rod to do it too, you know? You gave us that input at the last meeting, so it was good.
What is your next step?
My next step is I'm going to take all your notes and sit down with Jack and, and Jane and kind of see if I can redo this drawing a little bit. Maybe, uh, you know, do another couple, another couple of options and, and look at those points. Try to address those questions on the windfest, the erosion, the permeability, uh, and then come back to you again. I'm not.
Talk to the people, George and, um, Scott because they have some experience here on the North Ward.
Okay.
Saw the tours up there. They said, well, this is what we did and this is what we learned of. If we knew, then we'd know now. So they have some of that feedback from, you know, feeling the wind and the way it's on the tide and how it affected their natural looking shoreline.
Okay, we'll do that. So we'll talk to, to people who've been there, done that, and and we'll work on some of these points here and, uh, in the next month, we'll, uh, try to come back for another discussion, but I, I might do it in person if, if that's okay. But you're talking very well. You're doing very well. I appreciate it. So I, I appreciate.
Will you be able to perform? Does that, do you, do you come back to us soon or do you need more time?
If I, if I can do it in a month, we'll do it. I mean, it's, it's a matter of meeting those people, doing some discussion. I, you know, I can do the redesign with a lot of the inputs, you know, in a couple of days. It's, but you know, what I like to do, I like to have this be a spring project. It'd be a great spring project. And I've been going before all the agencies. It's October. We're kind of, we're, might be a little bit late, but, uh, we're okay. But I don't really want to go anywhere until I have what the community wants. That's where I want to be. And then I'll knock their doors down and, and, and work that, my way through that. But we're going to work it out with you guys and do the design that you guys want best. That's what we want.
Very sorry too.
Very good. Take care, Chuck. See you tomorrow. You're good. See you again, Fred. All right. Be well, guys. All right. See you. Bye.
So do I hear a motion to give lessons to.
No, it's a discussion.
Actually, it's 20 and 1, right?